...to live alive in the United States of America, through the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and just as it was created.
All right, I'm gonna introduce the members. My name's Bob Adams, I'm chairman tonight. This is Ken Pacheco, he's assistant chairman. The man on the middle, and there's Greg Logan, he's gonna do the... Clear. Tonight's agenda, first case is gonna be Wilson. Do you have a number on the case?
It's one dash seventeen is the first case.
That's the last one. Is it about fourteen or five? Is that?
Yes, I'm gonna read the statement of the sentence for everybody. Uh, correct me if I'm wrong.
Bob Adams, Ken Pacheco, and Greg Logan.
Okay, so this is the article that was put in the newspaper. Thirty-one forty-seven Shop Slot Road, Dayton, Mass. Legal notice, town of Dayton, Board of Appeals hearing. Dayton Town Hall, lower level, nine seventy-nine Somerset Avenue, February fifteenth, two thousand and seventeen, two thousand and seventeen at seven P M. You are hereby notified with the petition of Cliff Wilson, the property located at thirty-one forty-seven Shop Slot Road, number twenty-six dash one, for a variance to subdivide a thirteen point eight-six acre parcel having three hundred and twenty-six point zero one feet of frontage into two parcels. One lot will be twelve point seven, seventy-seven acres, having seventy-six point zero one feet frontage, and the second lot will have forty-seven, uh, point seven fifty square feet. Foot lot having twenty, two hundred and fifty feet of frontage. Decision pursuant to zone by law, section sixty-two twenty, table of dimensional requirements, Board of Appeals. Peter Carron, Ken Pacheco, Robert Adams, Greg Logan, Zachary Carron, and Jason Quinn. And this was published on January thirty-first and February seventeenth. We have the invoice on the... What was published in the paper?
Okay. Okay, good evening. My name is Jeff Bowman, uh, from Site Deck Engineering, representing Cliff Wilson, uh, the applicant for the petition, for the zoning board of appeals. We filed for a variance, um, in order to reduce the amount of frontage required, um, from two hundred and fifty linear feet to seventy-six point zero one, uh, linear feet on lot one, as shown on this plant. Uh, the property itself is thirty-one forty-seven, uh, Shop Slot Road. It's located, um, on the west, I'm sorry, on the east side of Shop Slot Road, the Dayton side, obviously. And it's about a thousand feet south of, uh, intersection with William Street and Baker Street. Just to give you a little history, um, what we've been doing on the site. We have filed a, uh, preliminary subdivision plan with the planning board, um, which has been approved. Um, I do have the, uh, I don't know if it's relevant or not, but I have the certificate of approval. Uh, so I can give you a few copies of that.
Yeah, please, thank you.
And basically, um, what that's for is, as you, as you can see on the plan, I'm showing a dashed line with some subdivision lot numbers. That's the, roughly the layout of the, uh, uh, the lots that we're looking to create, um, as we move forward with a definitive plant. There's probably gonna be some changes, uh, between lots, subdivision lot two and our lot two, which would actually be subdivision lot number one. You know, it could be reconfiguration, uh, of this property line here. We're trying to get that to work with, uh, soil conditions out with the site. But basically, you know, it's for a, uh, five lot subdivision, uh, one of the lots being around the existing dwelling at thirty-one forty-seven. And then there would be, um, one additional lot, uh, here, this location, and then three here. One of them being, um, lot two, that was shown on the variance plan. Uh, the reason we're in here, um, is that the, the applicant, um, is in a position where he's, he... If he got approval for the definitive subdivision plan, he wouldn't be able to construct it. Due to, um, he, he bought the, the property at the height of the market. Uh, the market, you know, within a year or so, the market had crashed, so he's... There's no equity in the house itself. Uh, matter of fact, the, the property is kinda upside down. So he's, and, and that's what kinda brought a pot, uh, brought about the whole subdivision that we're proposing here. Um, so ideally, you know, he's kind of in a, a catch twenty-two. If he moves forward with the definitive subdivision, gets it approved, um, he may not be able to build it. Uh, may not have the, the means, and he may end up having to sell it all off. And what, and basically what he's trying to do is, again, raise, generate some revenue to, to pay down the, what's, what's owed on the house. Um, i- if the variance were to be approved, we'd be able to subdivide out lot two, um, and sell that property to generate revenue, to be put towards the construction of the road, and then the, uh, you know, development of the property moving forward. The, just to kinda give you an overall, uh, what the property looks like, um, coming in. Uh, there is a field out here in the front, um, then it goes to a tree line in this location with a very steep slope that comes up, um, the side of the driveway, the south side of the driveway, before it kinda flattens out and then goes down to a bordering, bordering vegetated wetland located in this property, which is opposite the driveway from the house. Um, the only practical access to the house would be from this driveway. Um, really, this additional, um, land here, that's not service purpose, um, certainly wouldn't be able to get a vehicle up there, um, you know, to access the house. So, the, the lot that we're, the resulting lot that was shown, the lot one lot, that we're asking for the relief on, has more than adequate access to get back to the development. Um, it's gonna utilize the existing driveway that's in place. The remaining lot area is gonna have twelve point seven seven acres, which greatly exceeds the minimum lot area. Um, the issue is, we don't have the, the frontage. So, the reason we're here tonight is, uh, to ask for relief, uh, to be able to create lot two, as shown on the plan, to help finance and, and keep the project moving forward. If you happen to answer, answer any questions that the board might have.
So, can you show me, uh, the Form A lot, again, the two, two hundred and fifty?
It's, it's right in this location here. It's two hundred and fifty feet down, comes out to an angle, comes out this way. Uh, there is suitable access, I mean, a suitable area, I should say, to get a one hundred by one hundred foot box, as required by, by zoning, uh, to make it a conforming lot.
And there's no wetlands on that?
No, matter of fact, we, we've been through conservation commission with this, and we do have an O-Rat on the property to establish, they reviewed the whole site, and this is the only, uh, resource area on the property.
And that would be the second lot?
Lot two.
Lot two.
Parcel two.
Yeah, but parcel two is completely upland. There's no...
Oh, okay, yeah.
Yeah, there's no wetlands on that property. The only wetlands would be on lot one, with the existing dwellings. So, I'm, uh, twelve point, uh, one eight acre, I'm sorry, twelve point seven seven, twelve point one eight acres of which would be upland.
Do you remember, we had an issue with an apartment on the...
Yeah, I wasn't privy to that in the garage.
Yeah, above the garage. What's, you know what the status is on the...
I don't, that, that predates me getting involved with the project. What I do know, uh, that before we could file for the, um, before we could file a preliminary plan, there was an outstanding court case, I think that was a result of that, that issue that had to be resolved between the applicant and the town, which I understand was.
Are you familiar with that?
I am, yes.
Two means.
Right, there was no secondary means of egress. I don't have to go into all the details, but the occupant of the garage was moved into the main house, and through council, through the, uh, property owners council, uh, the suit was dropped. So, as far as I know, there's no more infractions there.
Your, uh, your preliminary plan that you showed us, she doesn't show where your, would, right of way would enter and access all of these.
Well, that's, that's the dashed line that's here. So what I did was, I don't, unfortunately, I didn't think to bring the preliminary with me, but I do have the definitive that we've been working on. And as I stated, you'll notice the lot configuration with these two lots is slightly different, um, on that plan.
What do you mean by slightly different stuff?
Well, this, this lot line here, because what we've been doing is, we've gone out, we've done soil testing on these lots. Um, we've gotten them all to pass other than the lot that we're asking for. But there is, the, the, the reason we have the configuration that we have here is, there is suitable area up in this, up in this location. So the lot line that was shown on the variance plan has been shifted, um, to incorporate the area where there is suitable soil.
It isn't changing anything at the street, 'cause I see you have rounded corners there. I can't really see what your delineated marks are.
Yeah, this, okay, so this plan predates the, the, uh...
This isn't what, what we're looking at here at all, okay?
Well, no, but I mean, this, this gives you an indication of where the right of way would be. You were asked about the right of way, so I mean, the right of way is gonna be six hundred feet long. It's basically, you're gonna come right up the driveway that's out there now.
With, with, was, uh, planning board aware of that six hundred foot cul-de-sac?
Yes.
Is that, that exceeds our, five hundred feet is right?
No, it's four to six hundred feet is the requirement.
It would just, it would just meet the requirement.
Okay, all right.
And again, I mean, Pl- 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 Planning board has reviewed the preliminary and approved it. But the, the actual right of way has not changed. Right of way is the same.
Okay. My next question is, ordinarily, we do, uh, when we hear something like this, you have a lot that is approximately, for the sake of argument, three hundred and twenty feet roughly, right? You're creating a lot with two hundred and fifty foot frontage, and one with seventy...
Let's say fifty, forty nine feet?
No, it's more than that, forty nine feet across.
Yeah, the existing frontage is three twenty-six, the resulting frontage would be two fifty on the new lot, and seventy-six.
It far exceeds what is, uh, for a Form A lot as it exists now. My question is, normally, when a presenter presents it to us, we're doing a thing where the insufficient frontage falls on the secondary lot, where this one, the insufficient frontage is gonna fall on the main lot, and we would sometimes be able to condition it where, uh, variance of insufficient frontage with a single family dwelling. This new lot that you're creating wouldn't have that same stature over where the other lot is pretty much built out with a full house, room, pool, barn. Any of that stuff would have to come back before us for a variance, 'cause it's, it would have non-conforming, but it's already in there.
The, ideally, the plan is, move forward with a definitive, construct this road, get the road accepted by the town, and the requirement for the variance goes away. All these lots then become conforming.
So that's what you should do.
The issue is, he, the applicant doesn't have the means to construct the road in order to do that.
But you can't make the frontage greater, am I right on this, Bob, on the original property line? With the original, original house, greater and make this one less?
There would be two non-conforming lots, though.
Yeah, we're trying to avoid creating two.
We're gonna make, we couldn't...
You could still get a, a lot with insufficient frontage.
But have a non-conforming lot to a lot that's conforming now. We always go the other way.
Yeah.
We take a little bit from here. This is, you're making a non-conforming lot on an existing dwelling.
He's circumventing any of the future build-out in that, 'cause it's already been done, whether we could... The other one would, everything would have to come back to us because it's insufficient frontage, anything.
Which, which is a good point, so you would have total control over the existing dwelling.
If you don't have any control, he's already done it.
No, but any future, any future building on that site would require him to come back to the Z B A, 'cause he has a non, non-conforming lot, whereas...
Where he has a conforming lot, no?
Well, that's correct. I mean, there's, there's no denying that. We have one conforming lot, we're looking to create, um, a second, uh, conforming lot, and one non-conforming.
Backwards to me, but...
Well...
And where, where are you placing your hardships at?
The hardship is the, the, number one, the topography of the property, and the, you know, if you look at the site, it's a result of the topography that we have here. And as a result of the, you know, how much it's gonna cost to construct a road that we need to construct. You know, we're looking at two separate drainage systems for a six hundred foot road. Typically, uh, when you have a road in that situation, you end up with one, it really keeps the cost down. So that's, that kinda, you know, that alone, I mean, we're gonna have to do another drainage system in the back here. We're gonna have to figure out, you know, something out in the front, which we're currently working on the design on. It's just, it's adding to the overall cost with this, you know, having to deal with this, with this hill. 'Cause then we gotta bring this driveway into compliance with subdivision road standards. Driveways have certain slopes that they're allowed to have. In this case, that driveway does not currently meet planning board regulations. So we're gonna have to regrade that as well. So there's some topography issues that we're up against here, uh, moving forward.
You go back to where you had your proposed house lots, feature house lots. So you're gonna have a house, this house is proposal lot one, is what you're stating right now.
Yes.
You're gonna have one right beside it on a hill, which is showing on the topography of, and that's gonna go up. So that's gonna be on a multiple slope hill right there.
It's gonna be at the top, the location, as you can see where the test bits are for that house. It's either gonna be in this location or out in the front at the, where this, the crest of the hill flattens out, right in that location. And it would be accessed, obviously, off of the subdivision road. So I mean, one house would be set here, um, and I mean, this is a wide open field, this is a wide open field. You know, the, the, these two houses can basically go, you know, anywhere.
How close is the road gonna be to the bout, the butters, on the right outside coming out of the new road?
To these butters here?
Yes, in the front.
Uh...
You have a subdivision drainage going there, correct?
Yes and no. We, we, we put that in there. Yes and no means we haven't finalized the design. So we're working, that was something that stems from the preliminary subdivision plan, uh, that we had approved. We were thinking ideally, but after doing the soil testing out there, it's not suitable for really anything.
So this is a preliminary plan?
That's a preliminary.
Yeah, so that's not, that's not a finished project yet?
That's good, like, we, with the preliminary, you don't run through all the drainage calculations and all that. It's once you get that approval to move forward, then you start analyzing it in more detail, which is where we're at now. And, you know, we have roughed out some designs, uh, with the drainage, you know. Again, another system, there's a, there's a, a drainage parcel back in this location, and then we're still trying to figure out...
As I say, if you have a topography issue, that, that water's gonna run right into that corner.
Into this corner?
Yeah.
Well, we'd, no, we have to avoid that. Obviously, the drainage is just gonna be reviewed by the planning board moving forward with the road, their, their consultant.
So what are you asking, are you, are you planning to do a subdivision here and asking us to approve this as a subdivision? 'Cause we can only, we can only do the...
The, yeah, I'm getting off track with it, so realistically, it's still a furniture issue that we're at.
I wasn't cutting you off, Greg, it just, I'm confused as to what they're asking us to do here. 'Cause we, we don't have the authority.
I guess what we're asking for is just to take one lot out of order. Be able to sell off one of the lots within a development prior to constructing a road. Whereas with the, with the development that we have, um, even though, you know, if you look at the frontage, oh, in here, until, you know, we can get this lot to conform, but until we build this road, this lot can't conform.
So what you're telling me, if I'm hearing you right, correct me if I'm wrong, is you want us to create this so that he can sell this off, so he can create a subdivision?
That's, that's what he's planning on doing. I mean, he's, he's going forward with this, this subdivision either way. But ideally, he's, you know, he'd like to control the financing of it as best he can to keep, keep it in-house, to maximize his benefit on the property. Simply what he's looking to do. And upon approval of that subdivision, again, this, this whole issue, non-conforming, say, that goes away. You'd hate to say you're gonna issue a temporary variance if you do grant it, but ideally, that's, that's kinda what we're looking at here.
I don't know.
So you're only coming before us because you wanna be able to sell lot two, but you could've gone before the planning board, had this whole thing...
And the whole subdivision.
Subdivision including lot two, but you would've been, because you couldn't just sell lot two then, is that what you're saying?
Well, we would have to, we would have to construct the road in order to make his, his, we can't just sell this off, because it makes his house non-conforming.
But if the road goes in, you can sell it. You'll have your own frontage on both roads.
Once the road's constructed.
On both roads. Both, uh, Shop Lots Road and your new proposed road. It doesn't show a name on the proposal, which is driveway.
Well, it's, yeah, it would, I think he's looking at like Wilson's way, I don't know if he's decided on a subdivision, I mean, a roadway, a roadway name at this point. But basically, you know, until that road's constructed, his lot would, would continue to be non-conforming, if we were to cut this lot out.
I have to be honest, usually when we approve something like this, we limit, uh, the number of houses that can be built in the original lot. In other words, we would say, yeah, we'll give you lot two, but a lot one that has twelve point six six acres of land, you're gonna have one dwelling on it. So now you're asking us to approve this lot two?
Yeah.
And then by doing that, you now have the possibility of putting five more houses in there. And I'm not sure we should be put in that position, quite frankly.
I don't think that's...
Doesn't have to do with the planning board, you know?
I don't think there's a hardship. I don't see a hardship.
I, I totally understand what you're saying, nor, but normally, you're dealing with, that's the whole point. You're gonna end up with one estate-style lot. It's not gonna be subdivided in the future.
It is, which is, right now.
Which it is, that's what it is right now.
It's an estate-sized lot.
Yeah, but, well, no, right now, it's a conforming lot.
Right, exactly, it's a conforming lot, but it's an estate-sized lot.
And it, well, if this were to be approved, and this lot were to be cut out, then it would be.
Most of us, most towns are at, you know, one acre, this is what, thirteen acres?
Yeah, most, I mean, you look at like Rehoboth, I think they require fifty feet frontage, um, and however many square feet, like, maybe multiple acres, I don't know, is it a hundred and twenty thousand square feet or something like that?
I don't know what they're...
Yeah.
The engineer's referring to a defined estate lot.
Oh, the definition of it, okay.
There are towns that have bylaws that actually allow for estate lots with a reduced frontage, exactly what you're, you're alluding to, Mr. Pacheco.
We don't have that here.
We don't have it, no.
Yeah, and, and, I mean, he's, you know, it, the applicant isn't trying to hide anything, obviously. I mean, we're showing the subdivision on the variance point. He's not trying to hide the fact that ultimately, this is his goal. It's, the point becomes, how does he, how does he maintain control of the property and still be able to do this to save himself, uh, you know, from losing the property?
But I've asked you before, you've got to show, in order to grant a variance on something in, uh, zoning laws or the zoning laws, you have to show us some type of a hardship. There doesn't appear to be hardship, 'cause this is all upland land here.
The, the hardship, the way I look at it is, well, the hardship can't be financial, but it's gonna be a result of the soil, topography, and stuff like that. So if you look at the project as a whole, you know, not looking, not looking at his personal financial situation, but if you look at the project as a whole, the roadway itself is very expensive to construct because of the multiple... I mean, you're gonna, we're gonna have to get creative with the drainage system down here, get it to work, get it to satisfy the requirement.
Creating that hardship, right? You're, you're creating that hardship. Dividing this and putting in five more houses, and you're creating a hardship for the road. As you have right now, you don't, it's not a financial hardship for him to just maintain a driveway.
You can move the road anywhere you want on the three hundred and twenty-six feet you have on Shop Lots Road to prevent a drainage problem.
No, that wouldn't, that wouldn't work, because if you were to move this road anywhere other than where it is...
That's, that's part of subdivision rule, we're not here for subdivision.
Correct, correct. No, I, I agree one hundred percent with that. But again, I mean, what, you know, what he's asking for is some temporary relief, um, you know, ultimately, it could be permanent. So if he doesn't get his approval, uh, for the subdivision, he's gonna end up with the situation that you just, um, explained. He's gonna have the one house, he's not gonna be able to further subdivide unless he gets permission from the planning board. He's gonna end up with the one house on twelve point seven seven acres of land.
It's what he has. He's not ending up with it, he has it already.
Well, he, yeah, he has more.
I'm gonna open it up to any of the direct abutters.
We abut it, and, um...
Your name, you gotta state your name for the record, ma'am.
My name's Deb Wagner, I live at thirty-one, um, eighty-nine Shop Slot, Lot Road, we're right next to there. There isn't a frontage, um, that lot there can flood when we get a lot of rain or a lot of snow. And then it creates all sorts of other problems, so, um, it would be an issue.
So you for it or against it?
Against.
And your address one more time?
Can I speak?
No, you're...
Thirty-one nine Sharp Slot Road.
Thirty-one what?
Eighty-nine Sharp Slot Road.
So going down Shop Slot Road, uh, towards Swansea, you're before his lot or after his lot?
Before.
Emily Montero, I live at thirty-two oh three Shop Slot Road. I live on the corner of Anderson Drive and Shop Slot.
Okay.
Which is my property, their property, and then it's that property. Now, if he had a hardship, he should've known. Why didn't he do that before he subdivided?
I don't think he presented the hardship. What are you referring to, ma'am?
He says he has a hardship.
It would be financial, ma'am.
Right. I think we all have financial hardship. And I already think we have enough houses in the back of us now.
I just was trying to get, clear up the confusion.
I'm, I'm against it. I'm, I'm against it.
Just warming up if you wanted to, uh...
But, hold on, are you a direct abutterer?
Yes.
Okay, good.
Live at sixteen forty Shop Slot, and if anybody's had a hard...
Your name, sir?
Excuse me?
Your name.
Wilson. And if there's anybody that's had a hardship through this deal here, actually, what happened if I can use his map? There was two big ponds here that were filled in.
Excuse me, sir, could you go back over that? I was a little confused. I, I was calling for a butters, you're, you're the petitioner, and when you get up, you started to...
Same, same name, he's not the petitioner.
Oh, all right, sorry.
There were two ponds that were there before this house at thirty-one forty-seven was built. And they had the conservation commission come down, and twice they got turned down, 'cause of the ponds. So what Mr. Pavo did was fill the ponds in and piped the water down onto Shop Slot, an illegal piping, and piped it under the street to the end of my property. If anybody's had hardship, I get three feet of water in my cellar from these ponds, which come all the way down Shop Slot Road. It's the drainage for, for the whole town, and it used to go underneath the road and go a quarter of a mile down on William Street. It went under William Street into that moat. Well, now it comes to my property, and I've been before the board, seven, eight years ago. And they said they would take it under advisement, Swansea D P W. Bob Markey came with me and said, we got our money to do a water study, and we never heard from Swansea. And now, two or three people on the street had water problems, so they put piping in and piped into the Swansea piping to dump it on my property. And I tried to get something done, nobody calls me back, I get nothing.
Mr. Wilson, can you, can you...
I mean, my property's three feet down from the water.
Can you show me on the map where your property is?
I'm across the street on Shop Slot.
You're on Swansea?
Yeah.
You're on the Swansea side?
I'm over, yeah, I'm right over here. I'm right at the end of Anderson Drive, and my property goes down a little farther.
Okay.
And here's where they put the pipe.
Under the road?
Under the road, onto the end of my property, and as you know, water don't go in a straight line. It is decimated every inch of my property, you walk on it, it's soggy. I asked the town for help, I get nothing.
So I was clear as to where you were.
So, the first house shouldn't have been built, and if you look, Mr. Pavo built it. He's now in jail in Florida for disaffirmative building practices. He waited for the conservation, conservation guy to change, and the next guy that came, after he drained the ponds, gave him an okay to build thirty-one forty-seven, where the water would come from here and go all the way down, and there was no problem. Now I got water coming down Anderson in my face, there's no piping on Anderson, no piping at all. The only piping there is, is to get water on my property, and I can't get anything done from anybody about it. And I'm watching these people put illegal piping, connecting it into Swansea's piping, that Swansea don't know about. Well, I'm sure they know about it. And I ask them what's happening, they scratch their head, we don't know.
Mr. Wilson, do you know if this man...
When in fact, Bob Markey knew, and the guy that was on the board here, when I came, he knew what was going on. But they gave me... Yes, I came, no, I came, oh, seven, eight years ago.
I've been here fifteen years, I don't remember you, but I have a question for you.
Then you must've been here when I came.
No, I don't, I wouldn't...
About this.
Were you at the zoning board?
Wasn't the zoning board.
Yes, I come to the zoning board, yeah, I came twice.
Let me ask you another question on this. Is this Mr. Wilson, that man that's...
That's my cousin.
Is the petitioner, was he the original purchaser of this property, or he purchased it from somebody else?
No, Mr. Pavo was.
Mr. Pavo was, okay.
And they got turned down to build on it, I know for a fact they did, and because of the water. And he drained it all down with pipes, under the ground, under Shop Slot, and I know the town had to be in on that, to dig the road up. And it rained hard about five years ago, and I called Bob Markey up, and I says, can you come up and look? I had a three hundred by three hundred pond in the field across the street from me. Next morning, gone. Where? Under my property. And I mean, you can see the water gushing.
Who is Mr. Markey?
Bob Markey.
Is he, is he a selectman in Swansea?
He is also the water superintendent in Swansea. He, if you talk to him, he knows exactly what's going on. Everybody's been trying to be kinda mum on it. I come to the point where I gotta do something about it. They have ruined my property, building this. Now they wanna put more houses in. I know the guy after me got an abatement on his taxes, what I heard, because of massive water on his property.
Is that a Swansea issue?
He's Swansea up, and nothing's being done. It's so wet around there, the plows and sanders are always there, 'cause cars are coming... And nothing's being done. It's so wet around there, the plows and sanders are always there because cars are coming in my yacht all the time from down Anderson Drive. There's no piping, no drains on Anderson. And even though the road used to be straight, it's all wobbly now. And even though there's little hills in it, there's so much water, it gets pushed over them little hills.
And you're opposed. You're against it.
Right.
What's your first name?
Steve Wilson.
Is there anybody else?
I guess I'm gonna have to seek legal help on this matter because I got nowhere with it last time. And I figured I had to come today because I can't let this go through. And if you look back, you'll see there was two gigantic ponds, huge. Three hundred by three hundred, two of them. It's watershed water. That's what it is. All the watershed water goes across Anderson Drive. Now it's got nowhere to go, so it comes down Anderson. And I noticed my neighbor's yard used to be like this. It's like this now, from all the water.
Anderson Drive is on the other, other side of your property, right? On the other side?
No, it's right in my face, it's the end of my property.
Across the street.
It's at the end, yeah.
This is Anderson Drive here. So you're, we're not talking about directly across the street, we're talking about down here.
Anderson Drive is directly to my driveway.
To the south, yep.
To the south.
Anderson Drive is directly to my driveway. You can drive down Anderson and into my driveway.
You got a barracuda in your yard.
Yeah.
Montero. Montero.
I burned the dishing on my house, ruined all the foundations of broker from the water.
Alright.
So, I don't think there's any more I can say. I do have a map with the ponds on it, a picture of it before they were drained. And the pipe now comes down, and it's about maybe twenty feet after my property. Nice big pipe. That the town put in, and I'm asking them, why is all this water getting on my property? We don't know. They put the pipe in. They could have, at least said, well, it's Dayton's water coming into Swansea. Why is that? They should have just left it going where it was. To William Street, under William Street and into the big moat. There's a moat, a mile by a mile there.
I'm gonna have to call on somebody else.
Okay, uh, by the time, say what I'm gonna say.
Thank you.
Uh, I'm Liz Shwell, thirty-one eighty-nine Shop's Lot Road. This whole property you're talking about, that was my family's property. And I'll tell you. First of all, I don't know what you're talking about. There was one huge pond there. That was our pond when we skated.
When it rained, it was.
To the right of the pond was a big swamp land, and our pond was spring fed. And Pavo came in. The, the biggest problem here is Pavo. He, and I don't know anything about a pipe going under. If there is, and Pavo did it, he did it at night. Because my mother would call me, because I didn't live there. I, I, I live there now. My parents got sick about thirteen years ago, so I went and go take care of them, and I stayed there.
That pond has since been filled in, though?
Yeah, but then, the guy who bought the house from Pavo, Paul, I can't remember his last name, real nice guy. He had to dig it all out. It cost him another, after he bought the land from Pavo, it cost him another hundred grand to clean up Pavo's mess. Some of it, not all of it. Pavo buried so much stuff there. I don't know, some was taken out, but most of it wasn't. I got photographs. Because like, you know, finally, when my parents caught, my mother would say at night, there's green lights, they're digging in the, in the field, they're digging in the field. This went on for months.
So you're opposed to this, ma'am?
The, the soil's terrible. I happen to know a guy that, the, the kid that was digging there, it cleared, I guess it perked, but he said it's the worst soil he's ever seen. And if that lot goes down in front, they gotta pump up the sewer, the leach and field or whatever, which would be right by my barn. And I'm not wacky about that because if he had everything in place, like, I feel bad for the guy, but, but I'm sorry, this is my, it, it might probably go downhill. I look at Hunter's Hill, they start something, never finished it. On William Street, there was another thing they were supposed to start, didn't even get off the ground. They put the road in, and that's where it ends. I, I, and because he doesn't know which end is up, oh, we're gonna do this, we don't know, it's not clear yet, I, I, I'm against it. You had a clear, precise plan, everything, all your Ts crossed, you, you know.
I'm sorry, your name one more time?
Liz Shwell.
Sir?
Yeah, Ken Beverley, three one seven seven Shop's Lot Road. I'm in the one right there on the corner near the entrance. And, uh, I'm opposed to the various part of it because I don't see the hardship. As far as the subdivision, as long as everything is done by regulations and follows regulations, I'm fine with it.
We're not here doing a subdivision, we're here just to.
Right.
Move forward.
As far as the various, I oppose it because I don't see a hardship.
And, uh, what's your address?
Three one seven seven.
Do you have any rebuttal?
Well, you know, going back to what happened previously on the property before, uh, Mr. Wilson bought it, I can't speak to that, I have no idea. All I know is we've had the, the site evaluated by conservation, we've delineated resource areas. They are what they are. They're there. Uh, the drainage that was put in, Shop's Lot, the cover under the road, you know, that would have to be combined, Dayton.
Then I gotta say again, we're not here to make a decision on a future subdivision. We have to come up with a reason for hardship, for creating a non-conforming lot with insufficient frontage and granting a, a, a lot that isn't built on, hasn't anything built on it and have it be a disaster. That is the issue for us. The other things really don't have a lot to do with what we're here for. And I need to know, you know, because surely it's not a hardship, sir. You got anything on this, Jim?
Uh, no, I, I, if I have the floor, I would say, with all due respect, because I respect your firm, I don't believe hardship has been sought. You haven't been able to prove hardship for this. It's unfortunate, but, um, I don't think this, I don't think this board has grounds to make a decision unless a hardship is.
It's a hardship, that's what we, we're not, his future subdivision, what he wants to do with all of that, that's a planning board issue. Our issue is, we, I can hear it and I listen, I sympathize with all of the, the things about a subdivision, but we're not here to listen to a subdivision. That, that, this is to whether we can create a, an, an existing conforming lot and changing it to a non-conforming lot. Existing non-conforming with insufficient frontage and create a not unbuilt conforming lot. That is, that is what we're for. Now, you asked to speak again, sir, you wanna add something else?
Uh, Mr. Miranda, who owns the over fifty-five community up there.
I know who you're talking about.
Couldn't buy that property back twenty, twenty-five years ago because it was wetlands, or he would have bought it. He wanted it, he had tests done, it was wetlands. And that's how I found out that, how they snuck it through, waiting for the next conservation, filling it in with stone and, and gravel.
Sir, how long have you lived at your present site?
Forty-one years.
Forty-one years?
Yes.
So you were there when Anderson Drive was built?
I was there when, Anderson Drive, I was there when it was Miller's Lane.
But, and Miller's Lane never came out there?
The whole thing was Miller's Lane at one time.
It never came out there, Miller's Lane?
Excuse me?
Miller's Lane never went out there?
Sign was on my pole in my yard, Miller's Lane.
Miller's Lane never was, I lived there my whole life. Miller's Lane ended at, at where Mr. Miranda has his, and then Anderson, built Anderson Drive.
Anderson was.
You were there. Used to turn around and yell. Used to turn the bus around and yell. That's why we, I, I can't understand how they allowed that drainage to go to your property, but this is not an issue here, the matter is.
Well, it's like ten feet after my property, but the water, I mean, the water has, if I ain't got water coming in at Anderson, I got it coming in on the other end, and three out of four of my neighbors are piping water into the same piping. The, it's a no-win situation, and I don't know how Swansea, well, Swansea didn't let these people pipe in. They did it on Saturday and Sunday.
Is there anybody else who wants to be heard? I can't do any motion, I gotta step down, I'm sorry.
Yeah, we're gonna make a motion that we, unless you have more questions.
Nope.
To close the public hearing.
A second down motion? All in favor?
Aye.
I wanna make a motion, take this under advisement.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So we're taking this under advisement, which means that we can still vote on this tonight, or we may vote on it at the next meeting. It has to be a public meeting, but it could be voted on tonight. People are welcome to stick around. I'm not sure when we'll get to it, if we get to it at all tonight. I don't think I'm, I'm in a position to resolve it tonight, quite frankly.
Neither am I, I'd like to take one.
I have a good idea as to direction I'm going with this, but, uh, I don't think I'll be voting out tonight.
We've closed all the public hearings, sir.
So.
I'm just wondering if that means when we're not looking, that he's, they're gonna get the permit for it? Because I'm not stopping here. I gotta go forward and.
Yeah, it's.
Relax, sir.
It has to be a public meeting that we make that decision. And what I've said, we may make that decision tonight. I, quite frankly, I'm not prepared to make that decision tonight.
I mean, it's not like I'm here now. I was here, if you look in the record, seven to ten years ago, exactly the same.
Yeah, but I don't believe he came before the zoning board, because there was no issue that came before, other than the apartment issue.
The apartment issue.
Few years ago.
On this lot?
But he may have gone before another board in town, so. He may have gone before another board, but I don't believe he came before this board here. He may have went before conservation. He's, he had a selectman on.
This is the, this is the selectman, the selectman was here, and there was three guys here.
This is the, uh, this is the zoning board of the year.
You know, I made it, I, I came in, I talked to somebody, they gave me an appointment to come, I was on the agenda twice.
There may have been, when I had a drainage problem on my apartment back, I went before the Slough. So that's probably what he did.
That's what I did. That, that's exactly what I did. Bob Markey, I got to come, and the water guy was here.
Basically, what they told me, that I would have to personally search to resolve it. They told me the town would take an action. I just.
You know something? I didn't wanna hold that. But considering they're not gonna do anything, they're just gonna let, you know something?
Actually, the public hearing is closed, so we can't.
We need help. It's my cousin.
I can see that you're very stressed, sir. I can see that it's stressful.
It's, every time it rains, I get water in myself. I can't get no help.
There will be no back.
Why don't we, why don't we agree that we'll make the decision at the next meeting, at the next meeting?
So, well, if there's gonna be a decision, no matter if it's good or bad, I'd like to know something.
So it'll, we'll be at our next meeting, which is March, March fifteenth.
This board doesn't vote that way, sir.
We won't necessarily be voting on it at seven o'clock, but.
I just feel like I gotta keep my eye on it now, because I don't want it to happen. My neighbors there too.
For the public hearings to be closed, our next meeting is March fifteenth.
March fifteenth.
Peter Francisco Day, for those that don't know.
Peter Francisco?
Yep.
Is that Saint Francisco?
Mr. Pacheco.
No. Yes, we're going to, uh, we're gonna, we're not gonna vote on this tonight. We're gonna vote on it at our next meeting, which is March fifteenth at seven P M. We may not vote at seven P M, but we're gonna vote that night, so you're welcome to come back. We don't, this has to be voted on at a public hearing, can't be.
There will be no decision made.
We, we don't have conversations about this privately, so we're gonna make that decision then. We will not make it tonight.
Thank you.
His neighbors here, or I didn't say have piping.
Yeah, you can't. Public hearing's closed.
Me, I got nowhere to pipe. I'm stuck.
So, do you have a copy of this map in the court?
Yes.
Okay, you do, okay. So this, we're done with this.
Okay. We get all the hearing questions. The chairman is here, making most motions. More questions? None of them, no problem. The chairman and the board then should decide and discuss it at a later time. This process will be explained by the chairman. Thank you. And now, okay, so we need to have Mr. Fedorov come up next.
This is part of the public input.
Public input.
Uh, do you have any time?
No, go right ahead. I know you have trouble hearing, but you shouldn't have trouble hearing me.
I do, yeah, I just don't wanna miss a word.
Right, that's fine.
So you're here regarding Stonegate?
I'm here with Stonegate, um, and, um, right now, as Ross has so aptly done, has shown that the last ten lots that phased, originally it was phase one, two, three, four, then we need this phase one, two, three, four.
Okay.
And, um, right now, I have no ambition whatsoever to build phase two, okay? Um, and, um, part of it is, you know, I'm sixty-eight this year, it's another five years, I'm not, be part of that. Because sometimes you gotta know where to go, you know, and.
Well, what's holding you back?
What?
What's holding you back?
And, and you've taken other projects out too, right? You've got other projects in town.
Yeah, I'm trying to get everything, yeah, but.
But that's, that's a relatively new one, the one you got in town, though.
Well, the one in town is just the Fielder's Choice Building. Do you know that building? And, um, what I'm doing there.
You weren't doing anything in East Town too, though, no?
No, I'm all done.
I know you tried Benjamins, yeah.
Yeah, they turned me down. But Fielder's Choice is a beautiful building, fourteen apartments. But I, and I get other small little buildings I wanna do, and, you know, managing subdivisions and, and, and building the roads, and it's all gotten so expensive. And I just don't have the enthusiasm for it. And so at this point, you know, I, the cost to build the roads, um, you know, for nineteen houses, I mean, somewhat workable, but I think honestly for my part that, you know, if I abandon this section and maybe some point down the road, come back here and say, what do you guys think of this forty-eight acres back there? Maybe we could do four twelve-acre lots back there, or something that's more in keeping what the town wants, you know, and.
The town would actually like a park, if you want to donate to the town, or a park.
I'm in.
Preferably a park where you can walk dogs.
A dog park.
I want one that can ride horses, I don't want a dog.
And hunting season, he can kill the.
I, I actually could make more money donating it to the city, town than I would ever make building the houses. We just gotta give you a receipt for a million.
I don't understand what you, what do you mean that is? This, this is a project.
I just wanna inform you what we're doing more than anything else, okay? And, um, I have no plan whatsoever building phase two, okay? It is forty-eight acres.
So that doesn't help us in our need, in our need to fit, to get our forty B, with this project to stop at that? Because there was a certain amount of those that are supposed to be part of the.
I believe sixteen. Were you supposed to build sixteen affordable houses? But is it ten in phase?
You're gonna end up with ten.
In phase one?
In phase one, so you're, if ten out of thirty.
Eight or thirty-nine?
Thirty-eight, yeah. There's this one other lot right here that's actually part of this. You see the little stub here?
Yeah.
I mean, I, you know, I, I, I could build that little stub, possibly do an act, one more lot.
I actually don't think you can, though, right?
I don't know, it's a power line.
Yeah, but.
No, it's before the power line.
If you're not building it, is there a road in here now?
There's no frontage for that lot.
Yeah.
Right, I'd have to build the stub to get the frontage, but I don't know if it's worth it.
But then it's a dead end, and it.
No, we don't need it.
We can't help that.
Maybe the best thing for me to do is just combine that piece with that line, and make a much nicer lot.
Yeah, okay, let's do that.
Okay, good, I'm in.
Okay.
Yeah, we'd make a great lot, and then there's plenty of frontage, or a nice step.
But, but there's more than that you wanna bring to our attention, though, right? It's not, it's not, it's not just this here. Aren't you looking for some difference in buildings you wanna build in the future? These pink areas here?
Oh, no, we're gonna build those houses.
As the two-bedroom apartments.
Yeah, just the way we've always done them, yeah. We're not looking for any modification on that, the same four houses we've done throughout. But I'd like to just do it, get the rooftop code, put the sidewalk in and, see, okay? And, you know, I can leave myself these two stubs, you know, we cut it there, and then I, you know, there'd be access back here. But anything I do back here, if I do anything, I'd have to come and see you, okay? And potentially you'd consider some bigger estate lots back there and up in the middle of the woods, or I could.
I'm here, what you wanna do and how you feel, but as, as this project has been under forty B, it falls under whole different things, and it stays in perpetuity forever as a forty B, all of this, this project that we've done. This body, I don't think we can just let it just lay idle and stay as a forty B. Because if you don't produce something in two years, because he's already started construction, but he's, you're asking us to put this on hold, is that what you're?
Um, I don't know what the proper way to do it.
I don't hear this.
It's, if I may.
Go ahead.
Um, it would be complicated. It would be a major change to the comprehensive permit.
Would that have public?
You would probably have to sever that piece of property from the original project and then vote on that independently of the forty B. But it changes the whole dynamics of the project.
Are you willing to pay for the attorney fees to do that?
Well, it's, it's not gonna have a choice. We're gonna.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Are you following me?
As far as.
Not sure, but yeah, uh, okay.
I am.
I, I've been told.
Richard, sometimes I have to say things two or three times.
Well, it's hard to hear, so.
No, I mean, this, this isn't an expense to us, this is a, there's gonna be an expense to.
It is, but with all due respect, Mr. Chairman, I don't, with all due respect, I don't think you'll ever see this built out. I said that four years ago.
You did, yes.
And, and so, so I think the only way we can look at this is from either, if no developer steps up, which I think the numbers don't work, then we have to look at it as either vacant land or the potential for four-house lots with tax revenue.
Twelve-acre lots.
Right, right, exactly. So, you know, but that's not my decision, that's for the board to make.
But there would still have to be a road to be put into it.
Well, not necessarily, no.
Not if he decides he's not gonna build it now.
Right.
Because he's gonna, if he comes back to the, to anybody on this in the future, he's gonna be holding a plan, so he'd have to decide how he wants to do roads and stuff like that, so. Whatever's gonna happen, he's not completely. Whatever's gonna happen, he's not completing this as is, he's gonna do, may do something different with that, it's not gonna look like this and have to be holding a plan.
Yeah.
But we need a, a public hearing.
Right.
The address notified in the newspaper, maybe some, some more money to account for the.
Notify the other different boards in the town?
Notify the different boards. But there's a couple of other issues too, right? I mean, what's the story with the pump station?
Yes, and I've talked to the sewer commissioners, and they asked me to come see you guys, okay? And their concern, two years ago, or a year, I think it was two years ago, you know we have a playground right here on the corner?
Yep.
And next to it, we created an easement to move, to put a pump station there rather than down the bottom of the, of the project, okay? And so, before I can build in these lots, I've got a, right now, they, there's no gravity sewer available with these lots, okay? We, the sewer department did let me put six houses across the street on E-one pumps, okay, and pump it in. And I think, and I don't wanna put words in the sewer department's mouth, but I think they would prefer, I said, we, we put this, we've got this station design and it's approved, we could put the station right there, so I wouldn't have to build all this different structure to go down here, something that's never gonna get built. But there's another option, that's available to sewer department, is to allow me to put, uh, put these houses on the same E-one pumps, okay? The benefit is they'll never, they won't have a pump station maintained for the rest of the eternity. Whether they wanna do it or not.
I'm not happy with that, I would, I would want a letter from the sewer department, telling, telling this board exactly what they want us to do.
Those type of pumps that he's got there now, they're gonna be replaced from time to time.
Right, and this'll be at the individual home, homeowner's expense, versus the pump station would be the homeowner's association that would be responsible for.
And they'd still have a sewerage bill as well.
Who got all these houses here that are gonna be impacted by it?
You know, whatever the sewer department wants to go, their concern, I can tell you, is that I may come back and say, hey, you know, I changed my mind, I wanna put this in, okay? Now, you know, if I'm gonna do it, if I'm gonna do this, they'd like me to put the station here, I just wanna.
Yeah, but if you're asking us to eliminate this as part of the forty B.
Right.
There's no way we're gonna ask you to put a pump station there, we're gonna want you to put a pump station in phase one. What's your, what's your solution for the playground then? What, if you put it?
Oh, no, there's the playground and there's room behind the playground, it's already been created.
Playground's created, playground's existed.
Playground's in.
Yeah, so, but he's not talking about taking it out then?
Oh, no, 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 there's plenty of.
Oh, you could actually, well, that's part of phase, uh, two.
This originally was two lots, okay, so small lots.
Right, but it used to be seven, two houses, but down to fifty-eight, fifty-nine houses.
Right.
And, and the other issue was taxes, I don't believe you, you know, you paid all your taxes back.
Well, we've gotten pretty close.
I know, but I don't believe you paid all your taxes.
It's down to seventeen thousand.
And, and what plan have you worked out with the, the town to pay that back?
Well, I was just, uh, Mary, um, a week ago, it was, um, forty thousand, I just, forty, I gave Mary twenty-four thousand, that was just last week. I gave her twelve thousand about two months ago, and I fully intend to get that down to zero before I start going forward with it. I wanna get it done.
So we would probably have to make that a condition then, if we approve this, we want him to be current with all the taxes.
That's fine with me.
Can we even hear this?
Actually, you would be prohibited from hearing it.
Or, I, I think we, we can hear anything.
We can.
We're not voting on anything like that, but we're just having a.
If I may interject.
Miss, Miss Anglia.
You cannot hear the case unless the taxes are paid or exempted into agreement with the.
Unless he comes with an agreement, right.
It is a written agreement.
Right.
Now, I'm not sure Mrs. Hathaway, I don't wanna speak for her, but she has told me she, she's not willing to enter into agreement.
Well, that, that's the third thing.
But I don't, I'll defer to her on that, that's written decision.
That's one of the things I wanted to have something from her, saying, what is the agreement, if there is an agreement, or she may not be willing.
You need that from her, and you need something from the sewer department, those two things.
Yeah, I, when I saw Mary a week ago, I told her what I was doing, and we paid all the taxes on everything here through the third quarter of this fiscal year, and the only task to do now is on some of this land down here, okay? But I still will get that done as well, and Mary says she doesn't have an issue right now. I'm step forward and giving her substantial amount of money, but my goal is just to get it all done, and pretty quickly, okay? It's sixteen percent interest, I get to get it off my back.
Tell me about it, I live in this town too.
Sixteen percent. When I first started in the building business, the default rate on your income, on property taxes was five percent interest, and I was borrowing money from a bank at fourteen percent, man, nobody paid their taxes.
Well, when I was a young man, we didn't have two and a half. They grew up two and a half every year, whether they need to or not, and every ten years, that's twenty-five percent.
Kenny, the letter you're requesting from the sewer department is what, it's their, their stance on this?
What, what is their position on a pump station versus those E?
Environmental one pumps.
Environmental one pumps.
Okay.
And I refer to the sewer department, they just wanted, they're considering it because it's.
Yeah, I'm gonna go by what they say.
Yeah, so I just, they, I just wanted it clear to them that I'm not going, and I think, so I just wanna go right there, we're not gonna do this.
Open a public hearing, see what happens, because it's gonna affect the rest of these people here, as to whether they want this to stop, because that, to me, is a, a major change, is it not?
Oh, it's a major change.
Yes, we.
Yeah, absolutely.
It affects our bottom line and our.
Right. If I may, make a suggestion, and I appreciate your candor tonight, I'd like to see this built out, we all would like to see this built out. I want you to pay close attention to what you think you might need to get this built out as a developer, because the time to do that is when we revisit the comprehensive permit. If there's anything that needs to be done to get these things sold and on the market, you need to make it part of your petition. We can't keep beating this thing to death.
I don't wanna beat anything to death.
We, we got this petition in two thousand and two, we voted on it in two thousand and four, we came back in two thousand and nine, we changed stuff, got rid of the age restriction in two thousand and eleven, you came back before us, and I went five years later. Uh, we're, we're back here again, so we gotta, we wanna wrap this up.
We've all been on.
Honestly, I only got in in two thousand and eleven.
Yeah, you did.
And then I got, I got a lot of things fixed, I got the taxes done, but it's been a lot of work.
It has been.
And right now, I think as far as things that need to be done, Jim, is really just complete the project.
Okay.
And my, there wasn't there an issue at the, uh, was one piece of property was built on another piece of property or something?
No, there, there's a problem with the vegetative screening buffers that we're in here, and I think that should be addressed as part of the comprehensive permit. I'll have that conversation with your representatives before you put a petition in. Because we need, we need to, we need to resolve some of those issues. That's what I mean, as far as the sewer department, ultimately, it's their decision. I can tell you that other subdivisions do use E ones and move a pump station, and quite frankly, he does make a valid point, you don't have the maintenance of a pump station, which, uh, you know, if you, if you see that pump station down in Mount Hope, it's gotta be replaced, it's, it's expensive. It does put a burden on the taxpayer, but we're talking about maybe less than five thousand dollars, and they usually have a lifespan of fifteen years or so. And as long as it's disclosed to them, I don't think it's a responsibility of this board.
But we have to make sure that it is disclosed to the purchasers.
Absolutely, and that's some of the things that we'll discuss next week.
Let's say fifteen years opposed to a regular sewer bill, what is the difference, Jim, I mean?
With a regular.
Like, if you had hooked to a regular sewer and it was being pumped, and you didn't have to replace this pump every fifteen years, you're still gonna have to pay a sewer bill. So this is on top of your sewer bill.
Right, plus, if it's a homeowner's association that's responsible for the pump station, you're gonna defer, you're gonna share that cost as well.
Okay.
Which, which can get off of five thousand dollars.
I didn't, I didn't know that the homeowners' association was responsible for that.
I don't know what the agreement is with sewer, so I don't wanna speak out of context.
I thought once it was accepted by the sewer department, the sewer department took over that, because they're getting revenue for the sewerage every week.
I'm like, I don't know that.
I don't know what they're.
But this is an answer that we can get from the.
Right, right.
Let them give it, yep.
We need, because that's what this board's gonna be meeting for this month, right?
Right, next week's meeting is gonna be to discuss some of these issues, right?
You mean next month, are you talking about?
Next week, I'm sorry, next week.
The twenty-second.
Oh, yes, 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 yes.
The board meeting, board, not, not as a zoning board, but of, of all of the boards.
Yep.
Again, I thank you for your candor, I just wanna, I drove through there, uh, doing a snow patrol, which is, which is something I'm not a fan of, but, I see a, nice signs up on quite a few lots, have you gone with a new empty company, or?
No, I, I haven't sold anything, Jim, those all were not premature. A fellow named Matt Daisy, Champion Homes, okay, he's a builder, a guy I've known for a while, and with what I've got going on in Taunton and a couple of other places, I'm just gonna hire him to build the houses, but I'm gonna be the seller, nothing's transferring, I'm gonna, you know, he's just gonna do the job for me, and I'm just gonna let him do it. But he'll be building the exact same houses, I'll be pulling the permits, I'll be doing everything.
I'm not gonna go through Richard Fedorov withdrawals or anything, am I?
No, 'cause I'm gonna pull the permits. No, that's just to get it.
Okay.
We have a plan that if we can get this underway, that if we can finish this whole thing, get these ten houses up, and be done in six months, and that's what my goal is, if I, I've been doing four, five a year, I just wanna go, get it done, and get the to, get it all done.
So at a, at our next meeting then, in March, you're gonna have the taxes taken care of?
Oh, we, all the taxes will be.
Because we're not gonna hear it then, if the taxes.
I'll be here.
We want that letter from the sewer department, I want input from Jim at the next meeting, and we probably should have our attorney here.
Hmm, she should be, definitely.
If it's, if you're gonna rewrite some of the comprehensive permit, I think that's a wise.
She's, definitely, she's gotta guide us around.
Are you prepared to come in for the next meeting?
I am.
Will you be ready, Richard, with everything you wanna do moving forward, so that?
Yeah, I know exactly what to do, I can hopefully see, talk to the sewer department, and, and get, get something from them, or, and I'll do, you know, right, right now, the, all the pipes are stuffed at this one place, okay? But the end game here, this, I know you have a project down.
Projects everywhere.
They, I know, yeah, and they have a private system, okay? This is, and the game plan is, at some point, we put the station, the sewer department, not the homeowners' association, is gonna take it over, okay?
The pump station.
Pump station, yeah, and one benefit, you know, and, to the sewer department is that, early on in the project, the sewer department gets a hundred thousand dollars from the developer to take the station, my predecessor's already paid that. I don't want it back, okay, I just leave the money there.
But it's expensive to build a pump station.
Yeah, there's a trade-off here, um, it, very, the thing with the sewer department, I would express to them, is that they will never have a station they have to maintain, they're expensive, they wear out, they break down. These E-one pumps, I've never replaced one, Jim, I've had them in for twenty, twenty-five years, and if you have to ever repair this motor or something, it's like a furnace in your basement, you know? And, uh, and we have six of them there now, and everybody, when they buy the house, I mean, it's written the contract, okay? So they do it with their eyes wide open.
Yeah, they're very common, uh, we've had whole streets in municipalities who can't get gravity, who opt to go for individual E ones, and each pump adds pressure to the system, which makes it work. So they have been proven, I would agree with that, it's still a mechanical device that's subject to breakdown.
Right.
But in any event, um, it's, it's. But again, it's not, it's, it's not for us to decide, that's up to the sewer department to decide, but I think it's a viable option.
And the thing when it comes to pumping, is that you use the E one, that's the Cadillac of the system, and some real crap ones out there, and they, they, they engineered the whole thing for it, you know?
I'm not sure, you think he's gonna be ready by the next?
I don't know, he's telling us he is. If he doesn't show up, we'll always argue.
Well, he's gonna be publicizing and all that kind of stuff that.
I'll pay for it.
You have to.
Okay.
You gotta, all your butters have gotta be notified, the public hearing, that's notice put in the paper, same as, as if you were applying for your first forty B.
Well, it's a modification.
It's a modification, you know?
But it has, I can, I'll go and work.
We've determined that this is a substantial.
The, the last time you, you came before is, you had agreed that it was substantial, we didn't have to take a vote on it.
No.
It was agreed by the petitioner, the developer, that it was a.
Do you agree now?
I do, well, we can't agree anything without a public.
But you don't.
He's not on the agenda, this is informal, that's why you guys don't do that.
So we can't even vote on whether or not?
No, no, I think.
Okay, we don't have to.
So how do we do it then?
I think you should meet, if we're not, you could potentially vote on it next Wednesday, because it is gonna be a posted meeting. Uh, if you did that.
Yeah, but next week is not a posted zoning board meeting, this is.
All three boards are gonna be there, absolutely.
Yeah, but it's for us, so this is for us, it's not gonna be a public hearing.
Well, that's up to you, if not next week, then it would be.
I don't even want it on television.
Then it would be, then it would have to be at the next meeting.
It could be, it might end up, you don't know how, how act up like, again, it could go viral.
It's a, it's a, it's a tie event, so you have to, you have to.
I'm not aware of that.
If you, if you, if you don't do it next week, then I suppose you would have to wait till the following next meeting to vote.
Put it on the agenda and then vote.
Jim, the best thing is the next month, it has to be fifteen days notice.
Yeah, that's fine, I think you're gonna need the time, Richard, when you start to think about what this entails.
You let him change his mind.
What, I'm not gonna change mine, I'm not. What I wanna say, if I sent, write an application, and I, in my letter said, this is, I understand this, it would require a meeting, isn't that?
I suppose if you acknowledge, is that a substantial change? That's a, that's a good point.
Yeah, I just put in my letter, I consider this a substantial change.
Two thousand and eleven.
I think so too, because there wasn't no, we didn't have to vote on it.
Okay.
We all agreed.
That's a good point, you're gonna brush it up on your forty B, huh?
I try, but I, it is a substantial change, so, I mean, you know, it is, it is.
I suppose if you acknowledge it and you submit the application, I think it would be valid, yeah.
So that would, I just. All bodies are in agreement, there's no argument here.
So you think you'll be ready for next month?
I have to be, because I wanna be done by the summer.
Okay.
But you know we can't hear it unless you have an agreement with the tax assessor, am I correct?
I, I'll, I'll even have him paid or, I'm gonna get, I'm gonna get Mary satisfied, okay? I'll get that done, I don't have to put any plans together per se, you know, I, I didn't, I don't have to submit any plans, I just have to get paid.
What's that? You're gonna modify it to exclude this.
Right, that's all, it's all right in front of you.
Just so we're clear, though, when we're talking about taxes, we're talking about this property here also.
Yeah, and the only taxes.
All the lots are all numbered?
This, this is, this is right now just taxed as two parcels, okay? Because the roads were never put in, those are the last two, I guess, everything here is done through the third quarter, okay?
But all the, the public, that is another plan, we already have the ones that'll be delineated, so we can word that in the transformation of the forty, the transform of the forty B to exclude all of us, all these will be excluded, all the numbered lots, when we, this is substantial change.
Absolutely.
That lot, that there in the corner across from the playground is gonna be added to lot thirty-six on the new drawing?
Yeah, I'd like to do that, it only makes sense, it'll make that a nice deep lot.
And it has its.
Why not give that to the homeowner? You know, so I'll propose that, that, this was fifty-six, this is fifty-seven, that lot fifty-six, which technically part of phase two, even though it's old, be combined with this one, we get that done, that's done, that's, I don't have to draw any plans, they're all there, you know, I just gotta get right some.
The only plans that you have to draw is based on the decision of this board through the process, through the collaboration.
Right.
If, if they, if they look favorably upon what you propose, then you will have to submit a modified plan.
Right, right, as far as this here is concerned.
Right, because it's no longer part of the forty B.
Then I just take a wood racer out.
No, we could just whiten it out.
We could level it off.
Whiteout, that's what they sell whiteout for.
You can go in there and clean up the trash that's in there and all of the pills and.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I, I'm not gonna leave a mess in, I don't know.
We're gonna hold permits, right, until it's cleaned up, okay? We know.
That's what we're here for.
That's why I gotta go by the summer, I gotta leave August first, I'm going cross-country on my bike.
You really wanna pick this out?
What?
O M, O M.
O M, O M?
Old men on motorcycles.
Yeah, yeah, I can do it, I got a Harley Davidson, I have a soft kick.
Yeah, so a lot of my friends.
I'm going to Chicago, I'm gonna take Route sixty-six all the way to LA, I got a son who lives in Chicago.
I would say it was a midlife crisis, but it's not a midlife crisis. I'm almost your age.
I really think you oughta rethink that.
I can do it, and, and if I get this done, I don't have to worry about coming back.
That's being optimistic.
Gotta clear my hair.
All right, let's go on here.
So we can hear it, they're gonna, what, speak to Ross, and we're gonna publicize this, you're gonna straighten out with the taxes, we want a letter from the sewer department, we want Jim to be involved, we want our attorney to be present.
Public input on this one? Is there anybody here?
I can't do anything till I get a letter from Mary that confirms the agreement.
Okay.
Once that comes through.
But you understand what.
They're here for something else.
Yes, we're here for, yeah, they're here for something else, yeah, okay?
She did much better job, you got extra. You know, you have extra.
She didn't color mine.
I actually.
I'll take the bad one.
No, this is mine.
Here, I'll let you have mine, get out of here, let's get to the next.
All right, I'm set.
Enough, enough language here.
Let's just.
These people are patients waiting.
I got him in a good mood. You're gonna kill it.
No, maybe I do.
He doesn't know it.
You just, you just jinxed it.
We can change in a matter of seconds.
They can jerk like that.
We got two acres with ten feet of frontage, we want forty houses.
I gotta tell you.
It sounds like they have a hardship. You can grab a chair.
Oh, thank you very much. I have to tell you, I've seen the snake pat part of these guys, you gotta be careful.
Walk out those things.
Thank you very much, we'll see you in the fifteen, we'll get it done, I'll work with Ross and we'll.
Well, he was part of the other case.
He was part of the other case.
He's not part of this.
Yeah, he, he was part of this, Richard, wasn't he?
Oh, I don't know.
Bye, Richard.
Bye bye.
I know.
This is a piece of property they're looking at purchasing, they haven't bought it yet.
Okay.
Do we know if this is company for us in the past?
Uh, they said it's Miranda's property, so I have no idea if that is something that was before my house.
This is that property that's located on Elm Street, okay?
I know exactly where this is.
In, uh, Miranda's.
He wanted to put.
Barabee was the man who subdivided it, the people that came before us was, uh, uh, from the boat ramp, Nancy, uh, I can't think of the last name, but it isn't important anyway. But they, they could, this lot was created here, uh, has, and it's a photo, it's a farm A lot, this one here is, what is it, forty-one, thirty-nine? How much is it, uh, eighty feet of frontage, is that what it, it is?
Just over eighty.
A little over eighty feet of frontage, and is of, how many acres is involved?
Nineteen point nineteen.
And they're looking to build one house?
Two.
Two.
So what, what the backstory has here is that myself, my wife, my son and his wife are gonna buy this together, and they wanna split it and put two houses on it.
With eighty foot of frontage?
Yeah.
What do you think?
So this whole cul-de-sac thing, that's all gone, right, we're not gonna go up?
This is what we had put in front of the planning board, they had approved this and we wanted to downsize it to just the two houses, um.
So why, why did you go before the planning board then, yes, why did you go before the planning board?
It had been recommended to us, um, that's what they had, there was a prerequisite on Main Street, so this is what we had done and then before coming here.
You could look it up for us.
I'm not a big fan, you happen to go to the, be quite honest, having people go to the planning board before they come to us when they're not seriously thinking about doing, it's nothing to do with, no, nothing to do with it at all.
We just went through it.
But I'm not crazy about you having to go for that expense.
We're completely new to this process, and we don't know what to do next, we had some folks working.
Previous.
For this property?
For this property, I'm not sure when, I wanna say.
What's the map and lot?
This is.
Ten and, um.
They're lot, lot three?
Twenty, map twenty-three, lot fifty.
It's eighty feet, but they wanna break it into forty-one.
What's this? The petitioner that came before us before wanted to build one house.
Close road?
This is Elm Street.
No, I think this is, that's, there is little, there's a house on that lot, right there.
This is, this house, this is a house, whole house.
Yeah, this.
That's how this is. It's for sale, it's.
Yeah, it's been.
This one's gonna be going up for sale too.
This is near Walter Cars.
Yeah, I know, it's Brett, Brett's house.
Yeah, yeah, right, there's another, down the other side.
So the other thing that's going on with this property is, there's a lot of it that's just unbuildable. Right, all up through here is steep hill rock, just unbuildable. Um, there's, what we'd like to do is have one house in this general area, and that's that property, and then one house in this general area, and that's this side, and that's it.
One driveway?
Yeah.
There is one already there, there's a, like a road that they had done, it's, you know, just the.
Just a dirt road right now.
These people here use this to enter that right now?
Nope, they have their own driveways.
Yeah, both have their own driveways.
Yeah, cause, well, I can tell you in the past, we haven't approved shared driveways, because there could be an issue once.
Somebody sells, yeah, so we.
This, this was the lot that Miranda came before us, wanted to build the, uh, uh, housing for the elderly with the thirty-two unit bed and breakfast. Okay, Nadia, you familiar with lots, this is a much, much more easier plan, but I can tell you, from my past experience with this lot, you're asking us to create two with a shared driveway, it was, I'm pretty sure it was denied with just the single family, because they, they wanted to build way back here.
Yeah.
And because of the topography of the land, uh, I can't, I don't know what the decision was, but I'm pretty sure that it was not approved on a single, on a single lot, that's why I asked you to look it up.
Okay.
Was that with the Mirandas that they were trying to put a single lot?
No, it was not Miranda's, Miranda purchased it from the woman, her name was Nancy. What is, what is the guy that owns the boat yard, Ransley, Nancy Ransley?
Ransley.
Yeah.
So we're, we're currently.
She owned this whole thing, they did this, they did this subdivision, uh, cut out this lot, created the farm A lot, left it with eighty feet, with nothing to do.
Yeah, so we've got a purchase and sales right now that's contingent on us getting variances to do everything we need before we, we buy. So we've not wanted to, to, to spend the money to get the detailed engineering done until we could get some sense of whether or not this is okay to do.
So who spent the money then for this, going before a planning board, was that you or was that the?
Yeah, we, we spent that money, I mean, we had to have something, but we didn't wanna get into real detailed engineering.
I, I think it's prudent if I make a comment, the planning board has approached me about bringing to town meeting estate lots. And it's ironic, cause we just talked about it tonight, I believe the planning board is looking to create some type of, um, bylaw that will allow estate lots within town, which does exactly almost what this is, they're gonna ask for a reduced frontage and excessive area for one house.
One house.
Right.
I'm not opposed to this, but I wouldn't even be opposed.
No, no, no shared driveways.
That's the problem I see.
So, so, but I agree with you, I agree, and, and I mean, there's no disrespect to your family now, but you may not, you may move on, and now we have a shared driveway with unrelated individuals, so it's a problem.
This guy can't afford the snowplow, you, you have to have a plot, but, what they said.
Didn't we have a property where there was an issue with a shared driveway, I think it was, uh.
On Wayo Street.
Was it Rouge's?
No, it was a Rouge's, and it was on Wellington Street.
Yeah, but then we agreed to, if they, they had to put some kind of a divide up between the.
Two feet.
Right.
Two feet or something, I don't know if we have, but I don't wanna worry.
And we, and we.
Yes.
Main Street was the most recent one.
Bob Mullins area up in that.
No, no, down the bottom of the hill.
Right.
The bottom of those two big houses.
Two big mansions going up, yeah.
Nancy, Nancy?
Ransley.
Ramsey?
Yeah, Ransley, boat yard.
So.
It wasn't the boat, it was his sister, yeah.
So I think you're going to see perhaps even on this town meeting, a petition by the planning board to do estate lots in town.
Which would make our job easier.
He wouldn't hear these anymore.
Right, except we would hear this, because it's two.
Uh, well, it depends what frontage they ask for.
This is eighty foot frontage.
If, if planning says thirty feet is fine, then no, you wouldn't hear it.
They could just divide it, yeah.
You can just divide it and you'd, you'd be fine, I don't know what the planning board's thinking for frontage, but I think they're gonna use the five departments twenty foot requirement as a base, so I don't know that it'll be much more than twenty feet, is what I'm telling you.
And I remember we had to make sure it was a radius for a fire trip to turn around.
What they're trying to do, and I don't wanna speak for the planning board, what they're trying to do is, there are a lot of lots around town like this, and they're trying to stop the subdivisions, because if this topography wasn't the way it is, you'd have half a dozen houses in here.
He wanted to put a thirty-two bed, bed and breakfast there, then they take out one kitchen, you got sixteen, two bedroom apartments.
So hear me out, the estate lots actually reduce, they eliminate that, because you're tying up a big bulk of land with one house.
Right.
Which is sort of how we've been discussing in the past with other people come in that you've wanted to do. So, this may happen, I'm not saying that you should wait, but I mean, it may happen, now, if that's the case, you may have justification for granting a variance, knowing that eventually this is gonna be a conforming estate lot. It's not gonna need a variance at some point.
I don't know how planning board is going, so you're here tonight as an informational informant at present, and I, I hear everything Jim has had to say. My issue with this is, is two lots in the two, under two ownerships with a shared driveway. If you came in here with a single ownership, two, two lots with one owner, it would be no different than like a two-family house. I would be more inclined at our present than to do it with eighty foot frontage with one owner than I am with two owners with only forty feet of frontage, but if we.
Doesn't a problem develop down the road when that one owner sells the property?
He can only sell it to a single, one, it can only be one owner.
I'm not crazy about that.
We don't do condominiums, uh, no, two, uh, condo, not condos, but duplexes in this town.
No, no, I, I agree with that.
And I know based on past history that this has been turned down with only one single lot.
Right, right.
Only because I've been on the board all the time.
So are you suggesting that it's stay one lot, and they build two families, is that what you're saying?
Either have two houses with one owner, I don't know if that.
You can't do that.
We've done that.
Two, two separate buildings, two lines on one lot?
Yes, come on, you know, you've been with me a while.
Where?
Okay, in the corner of Route forty-four, I didn't wanna give them information.
No, that was a, that was a two-family, that wasn't two separate buildings.
It was a duplex.
They're, they're two duplexes.
That was a duplex, right.
Two, two families, they're not duplexes.
Right, right.
Segregated park, not segregated, yeah, what's in segregated country club in the corner of Route forty-four?
Yeah.
That corner lot, who was it?
Right across from the.
With Lofts, right, with Lofts, yeah, but that, that was different.
But it's a single owner.
But it's for two family, yeah, but that's different than what this is.
Different than what this, what they're asking.
It's plenty of frontage, it frontaged in two streets, but it was also connected, and it was also commercial property.
Right, yeah, I'm not, I, I, I hear what you're saying, Mr. Adams, but I don't know that this, I think, I think, and I, I don't wanna try this for you, but there's definitely a topography problem here, I've, I've been up there, there's a topography problem there.
It runs right down the miles, that whole ledge.
So, 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 I mean, there is some hardship, it's whether or not it's hardship for one house or two houses, I think that's the problem.
Well, to get to here, is this where you wanna build a second house?
Yeah, here and here.
There is a house here already, uh, where is, this is Walter Cars, this is theirs, this guy here is.
Yeah, Mr. Duah, right.
It's a Duah, yeah, well, where's Miranda, Miranda owns the land, Miranda says, oh.
Do the two driveways and leaving the buffer on the side now?
Yeah, because it's got eighty feet.
We did that.
That's actually a lot.
Yeah.
Yeah, a lot, yeah.
We'd have two separate driveways.
The fire department concern was twenty feet per driveway, right, well, actually, no, at twenty feet wide, he doesn't need a turner.
You're backing up.
Right, but the shared driveway thing, I'll tell you, with, with definitively, you won't get a shared driveway, cause I'm opposed to it, this board's opposed to it.
Okay.
So, uh, so it would have to be two driveways, um.
With a separation, right, stone or whatever.
So now you're asking us to give them with not, if there's two lots, two separate lots, it's forty feet, we don't usually go back with fifty, it's the minimum cutoff for us.
I don't think we actually have a cutoff, but, I wanna say.
We did something at Bob Mullins like this.
We did, Bob Mullins has less than that.
Yeah, I wanna say it was less.
On Main Street, there's two brothers that built a house, they have less, how much do they have?
Yeah, they don't have, I believe they only have, they had total of seventy-five and we split it down the middle.
Yeah.
So it had, there is, you have, you have had cases similar to that.
I'm not gonna argue whether we've done it or not, I know we have done it, I know that, what the dimensions were and stuff, I'm not sure. What, what they actually, where I do know that, uh, that one on Main Street with the two big houses, those were done, there was five.
Yeah, that's the one I'm referring to.
Yeah, they did, they were gonna put five lots, they came into the pool, and we did the shared driveway, but it's split in the middle, each one has its own.
This could be split, so we can add a condition.
Almost the same way, um, except you won't see these houses.
Right, if you're here just to ask, cause if we can hear this, we certainly can, I don't, if you wanna feel in as the way it is, uh.
And don't forget we have the board, the three other members, and the three other members may be the voting members, so they're getting input from half the board.
Right, uh, well, we're completely new to this, like, why do you do stuff with it? And, um, completely lost, as to what the right thing, and we don't wanna throw money into it if it's a non-starter.
I don't think it's inconsistent board with what you've heard in the past, at all.
How many, how many?
This is nineteen acres, and change, we're getting two house lots, nineteen acres versus.
Right.
I, I like that, and if we can get that road the other way.
And I know that the person, the owner is, came before us with other plans.
Oh, I know, I've heard all about it, yeah.
He was before us with the issues and.
Yeah, I knew that was, that was his water.
Well, that perched, Joe, have you perched that?
Town person, I would rather see something like this.
Yeah, that's, that's our sense of it too, is that.
So you haven't had the land perked?
No.
They've done their own, they said, which they said it perked.
Miranda's said that it did perk, we don't have a paper. Absolutely, yeah, yeah, they just claimed that it did.
Well, you might wanna make that condition too, though.
Yeah, that might, that is part of, that is part of yours, you know, it is, it's already in the agreement.
There's a lot of ledge.
Yeah, your variance and the perk before we even, uh, before we buy the land, right, so.
But we, we're trying not to spend any extra money, definitely.
You know the, do you know the lot, it's where Barabee did this division, you remember, you were with the board with us on it, and, uh, he created this.
That was Joanne Ransley on that.
Yes, she did this lot here, you did the perk, did you perk back here? Okay.
There are white perk pipes sticking out of the ground peppered around the property, so I think they did their own.
If they weren't witnessed by.
No, 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 but he said the owners of the land may have done their own perks.
Oh, yeah, I know, but they.
Yeah, I said it has to go by.
Absolutely, yeah, they want the piece of paper with the stamp, I think he wants to cut himself too, so you guys make sure.
Oh, yeah, no, I, I agree, yeah.
Take nothing but the green and water.
Absolutely, and water is really for wealth, right, yeah.
There's no water over there.
Tell me it's not town water.
Oh, right, so we get a drink, right, 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 but there's so much water.
There's town water across, oh, yeah.
Say it again, maybe, huh?
Yeah, there's water.
Plenty of water then.
Yeah, we heard the first case.
Yeah, I know. No shortage of water.
Well, if you were to go straight through the woods, pretty much, you're going right to where he is at the end of it.
Absolutely, yeah, our concern, when we look, our, one of our concerns when we look at this is Hunter's Hill owns this. Right, and right now, if you look on their website, they've got all these wacky, uh, golf greens in right now.
Well, it's supposed to be a golf course to go there.
Yeah, no, I don't see them ever being able to afford to put that there, considering what the land is.
Well, they may come back and do later.
Yeah, so we definitely don't wanna put something there, because he made.
That's a conservation subdivision, that has to go through before completing them, all right?
It does, but they can come in and modify that with the planning board.
Like planning board would.
Like they come before us?
Conservation subdivision, they had to give one-third of the property back to the town.
Yeah, but there's a lot of property there, there's a lot of property.
There's about thirty acres here, then you get to the power lines, and then there's a bunch more.
That was supposed to be in the original plan where they put the septic system, cause you're familiar with John Souza's bond?
Right.
That was supposed, the septic system was supposed to go in there, they changed it to go out and back of Souza's, um, on, cause he purchased the land from Souza. Out on the other end, so that changed, that, that is all left open now, so it is freed up to something.
It's beautiful property, I've been back there, it's a nice property.
Yeah, yeah, I would, if, if this all went through, um, once our finances, when we caught our breath a little bit, I was gonna talk to them about buying this just to have it, to stop it from getting built on, right, just to get that much more, you know?
Does he come back and frontage anywhere else over here, cause this is Brett's property, right?
He's selling it, it's not up for market, it's going. Is that a, a big white house right after it?
Oh, that's, that's, you've got a lot of.
Heading this way, right after your property.
Well, I know Zasmut is, Zasmut is, Zasmut is a sale too.
It's a sale too.
How much land is that?
That one's a lot, that's a lot of land.